Buenos dias a todos, bienvenidos al concilio, acá estamos listos para una junta del concilio. Son las 10:15 de la menos 15 miembros presentes. Gracias a Ricard, de los house, que se ha referido a Rosal. Estamos 10 miembros para un coro y para conocer mis negocios, mi negocio. La lista de ausentes. Debo de darle.
Buenos dias a todos, bienvenidos al concilio, acá estamos listos para una junta del concilio. Son las 10:15 de la menos 15 miembros presentes. Gracias a Ricard, de los house, que se ha referido a Rosal. Estamos 10 miembros para un coro y para conocer mis negocios, mi negocio. La lista de ausentes.
Buenos dias a todos, bienvenidos al concilio, acá estamos listos para una junta del concilio. Son las 10:15 de la menos 15 miembros presentes. Gracias a Ricard, de los house, que se ha referido a Rosal. Estamos 10 miembros para un coro y para conocer mis negocios, mi negocio. La lista de ausentes. Debo de darle. Buenos dias a todos, bienvenidos al concilio, acá estamos listos para una junta del concilio. Son las 10:15 de la menos 15 miembros presentes. Gracias a Ricard, de los house, que se ha referido a Rosal. Estamos 10 miembros para un coro y para conocer mis negocios, mi negocio. La lista de ausentes. Debo de darle.
Buenos dias a todos, me gustaría. Digo que me ayudan a dar la bienvenida y felicitar. Una organización maravillosa, en el Valle San Fernando, Alito Lúquilos. Por 15 años. Ha sido una comunidad, una organización, para ver una organización. Ha estado trabajando con una fuerza de policía, que ha estado trabajando con muchas organizaciones de la policía. Para hacer su comunidad mejor. Ahorita también han demostrado el espíritu de lo que es parte de una comunidad, también lo que es parte positivo de una comunidad. Los con eso le daría la presentación. Los amigos de Harry Williams, Jim Carlos. Que ellos que dan las palabras de lo que ha sido por 15 años. Añadiendo la comunidad a esta maravillosa organización. Él dice que me ha oído hablar, pero fue un poquito. Es una persona que diga, pero. Por 15 años. Hemos estado juntos, nuestro grupo. Y nosotros trabajamos duro. Manteniendo nuestra área limpia y segura. Esto es una extensión de nuestra casa. Desde donde empezamos de nuestros vecinos de área como nuestra casa. Nuestro hogar. Desde donde podemos dar soporte como lo hacemos de Tony. Alex. Nosotros vamos a continuar haciéndolo. Y voy a poner a James.
Buenos dias, señor presidente. Namos queremos congratular y agradecer al concilio por todo lo que han hecho por nosotros en el pasado. Hemos tenido una cantidad tremenda de ayuda de nuestros líderes en el valle. Hemos sido muy afortunados de tener buenos representantes. Hemos tenido a los mejores representantes. Pero nuestros representantes son realmente los que han hecho algo por nosotros. No puedo recordar un tiempo en que hemos traído un proyecto y hemos dicho que necesitamos ayuda aquí. Bingo. Esos representantes estaban justo en el dinero y nos lo hicieron. Si tienes la oportunidad de venir a Alito, vas a venir a un lugar que está verde y limpio. Por favor, gracias.
Gracias, Harry y Jim están muy tímidos sobre sus logros como grupo de comunidad. Y eso es lo que los hace tan maravillosos. Por eso están haciendo esto de reconocimiento, porque es lo correcto. Empiezan como 235 árboles. El de quien estaba trabajando en la comunidad de la lenta. Todavía tenemos como 75 que van a identificar. Entonces como ya tenemos nuestro trabajo hecho. Pero ese es nuestro trabajo más fácil. Y más agradable cuando tenemos buena gente de la comarca, muchos miembros. Los que están haciendo el trabajo y sirven a la comunidad como lo se. Les merece. Les merece el certificado de reconocimiento a los de la lucha. Si pueden recibirlo en lugar de ellos. No les importa tomar una foto aquí, por favor. La próxima presentación que me gustaría hacer... He estado esperando toda mi vida para hacer esta presentación y para hacer este reconocimiento. Con eso me gustaría tener a los miembros de la equipo, un día mexicano venga para adelante. Este grupo de gente decidió hacer su premiere aquí en la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Para este maravilloso trabajo, este maravilloso piece of art. Y con eso creo que es solo fitting que nosotros, la ciudad de Los Ángeles, los agradezcamos y los reconozcamos por hacerlo. No todas las fotos que se hacen en el mundo o incluso hechos aquí en Los Ángeles. Tienen el tiempo y la energía para hacerlo aquí y lo han hecho. Y este es un muy importante película. Esta es una película sobre cómo dependemos de los demás. Esta es una película sobre unidad. Esta es una película que está haciendo chiste al ver el hecho de que dependemos de los demás. Y eso es una cosa maravillosa. Esta es una de las comunidades económicas más grandes del mundo. Y hemos crecido en ese rol mientras hemos hecho una de las comunidades más diversas del mundo. Es una cosa maravillosa, es una declaración maravillosa que nosotros somos parte de ella. Una vez más, he esperado toda mi vida consciente para hacer esta presentación. Y para conocer esta película. Esta película ha estado en el concepto de muchas personas. Que vienen a este país como inmigrantes, no solo latinos. Pero gente de todo el mundo. Que adoran este lugar y aprecian este lugar. Y encuentran una manera de... De reconocer todas las diferencias y todas las dificultades y todas las cosas maravillosas que vienen a ustedes cuando... Cuando luchan por la vida y hacen que las cosas se hagan. Dándole a los hijos. Estos son los temas que se exigen en esta película. Y con eso me gustaría hablar en no particular orden, pero Yareli, Arizmendi, por favor, decir algunas palabras.
Estoy abrumada. Quiero agradecer al Consejo de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles y en particular al cardenaz por apoyarnos. En un trabajo que es definitivamente un esfuerzo de corazón. Necesito decir y participar en la comunidad que somos miembros de. Y pedir que todos reconozcan nuestras contribuciones y reconozcan como apuntó. Que nuestros destinos están entrelazados. Y hemos tenido soporte durante todo el tiempo que hemos estado haciendo esta película. Y ahora la ponemos a la audiencia. Y la publicaremos hoy, el 14 de mayo, es su día de abertura en California sur. Y está abriendo en 58 salas, están en 58 pantallas. No es como sospecháis, es una pequeña película, pero es como un motor que puede. Gracias al apoyo, el apoyo genuino de todos los tipos de personas. Y una de las personas clave ha sido Televisa Cine, el distribuidor de esta película, quien creyó en ello. Lo suficiente como para ir a la batalla con él y ponernos en 58 pantallas. Y no sé, quiero presentar a Sergio Arau, el director de la película. Y Sergio Guerrero, el coescritor. Todos lo escribimos, él es el director, yo soy la actriz. Y aquí tenemos a esta persona clave, Eka Har Kondan, Televisa Cine, el distribuidor y original productor. Quien creyó en él desde que empezó. Solo como está mostrando ahora que creemos en él. Que tenemos la fuerza para ir y probar el punto. Y el punto es que vamos a juntarnos y hacer un mejor California, un mejor Estados Unidos y un mejor mundo. Gracias.
Soy el director. Yo soy el director. Ella es la oradora oficial. Estoy muy emocionado. Estar aquí es muy impresionante, nunca... Si alguien me hubiera dicho que mi primera película iba a estrenar en Los Ángeles y iba a estar aquí. Jamás lo hubiera creído. Es algo que nunca esperé, pero espero que la película sirva para que estemos más unidos, para que todos nos veamos como humanos. Gracias.
Gracias, yo me siento también muy honrado de estar hoy aquí. Yo soy productor de la película y distribuidor de la película. Creo que es importante además señalar que somos una empresa mexicana que llevamos mucho tiempo en este negocio. Hemos producido muchas películas. Y con esta película abrimos una nueva empresa aquí en Estados Unidos que es Televisa Cine. Con la que pretendemos distribuir y hacer llegar aquí a las comunidades latinas principalmente. Las películas que hemos estado exhibiendo en México. Y bueno, estamos contentos de esta película. No hay que irla a buscar a cines chiquitos y extraños, estamos en casi sesenta pantallas. Exhibiendo al lado de las películas como Brad Pitt. Y bueno, muy contentos, muy honrados y muy nerviosos. Muchas gracias.
En nombre de todos los castillos y equipos de la jornada sin un mexicano, me gustaría agradecer al Consejo de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles por este honor. Gracias.
Muchas gracias.
Sí, miembros. Durante los seis años que he tenido el honor de servir en servicio público con Tony Cardenas. He tenido la oportunidad de escucharle contar la historia de su padre y su madre y su lucha. Para disfrutar del sueño americano y darle a su familia una vida mejor. He oído hablar de todos los sacrificios que sus padres han hecho como inmigrantes a los Estados Unidos. Y entonces, Tony, te agradezco por traer a Sergio Arau aquí con nosotros hoy. Porque, para mí, este es un película muy importante para todos nosotros. Tengo la oportunidad de ver la película hace dos semanas. Y decidí que tenía que traer a mis hijos. Y lo hice porque ahora en California hay un debate muy emocional y caliente sobre inmigración. Es un debate sobre si los inmigrantes que vienen aquí de América Latina pero por todo el mundo. Pero si estos inmigrantes están contribuyendo a este gran país. Si realmente son un problema y un desafío para nosotros. Y en tantos sentidos, esta película fue tan instructiva y tan positiva. Porque lo que dice es que habla sobre todas las contradicciones. Habla sobre el debate. Demostrar con fases y humor cómo muchos inmigrantes están contribuyendo a California. Especialmente los inmigrantes de América Latina. Pero todos los inmigrantes. Y porque sentí que esta película era tan importante para mis hijos para verla y para sus hijos verla. Nuestros padres han hecho mucho para hacer California grande. Nuestras familias han hecho mucho. Y había algunos que intentaban escapar de ellos. Que intentaban hacer esto positivo un negativo. Y esta película, en tantos sentidos, es una oportunidad para nosotros de realmente celebrar. Lo que los inmigrantes han contribuido a California. Para celebrar en una forma muy positiva. Que, mira, estos cambios son inestable, todos. California es un cambio, LA es un cambio, pero va a ser okay. Podemos hacerlo funcionar para todos nosotros. Ya sea de Armenia o Rusia o Vietnam o Europa o México o Guatemala. Este gran estado ha sido repleto por los inmigrantes, por su trabajo duro, por su cultura, por sus contribuciones. Y esta película habla tan alegremente de eso. Así que quiero agradecer a la señora Arizmendi y al señor Arau por esta maravillosa película. Porque esta película es más que solo una película, en muchos sentidos. Es un contribuyente al debate sobre el futuro, el futuro esperanzado para California. Gracias.
Antonio Virigosa y yo hemos visto esta película durante las últimas semanas y hemos estado hablando de ella. Es una película muy ilustrante, divertida, es sincera, es honesta, es positiva. El tipo de película que supongo que querrían que todos sus hijos viesen. Creo que es una gran oportunidad para nosotros celebrar cuán maravillosa es este país y esta película ciertamente muestra de una manera muy maravillosa. Hay un par de cosas que me gustaría señalar. Esta es una película muy educativa. Por ejemplo, si has oído a alguien o tú mismo has pensado que solo hay tres países a nuestro borde sur. México, Centroamérica y Sudamérica. Necesitas ver esta película. Porque francamente esta película señala muy precisamente que hay cuarenta países a nuestro lado. Y una de las cosas que es muy importante para que la gente sepa. Algunos dicen que es controversial por el título de la película, "Un día sin un mexicano". Y hay mucha gente en el resto de la comunidad latina que dice, hey, espera un minuto. ¿Cómo que no dice un día sin latinos, un día sin Centroamericanos o lo que sea? Bueno, francamente, si ustedes se ven un poco como yo, o maybe Ed Reyes, o Alex Bidear, Antonio Virigosa, o incluso Eric Garcetti. Ustedes pueden haber dicho, oh, eres mexicano. Y francamente, hay muchos latinos que viven en El Salvador. Son de Colombia, muchos lugares diferentes. Así que una persona que es latina en California sur puede relacionarse con el título. Si solo piensan dos veces cómo les pasó a ellos o si ven que pasó a alguien más. No es un mal hecho, pero creo que es algo que nos permite entender que hay cuarenta países a nuestro lado de nuestra frontera. Y estos son los tipos de cosas que esta película trae y lo hacemos de una manera... Me gustaría señalar, no soy tan talentoso como Eric Garcetti para ese punto. Pero me gustaría señalar un par de cosas que pueden indicar que ustedes pueden solo ver esta película. Si has oído la frase, oh, ustedes hablan mexicano. Ustedes van a querer ver esta película. Si has contratado a alguien y necesitas un intérprete, ustedes van a querer ver esta película. Además, pero más importante, si te gusta ver arte de calidad en la pantalla, ustedes van a querer ver esta película. Esta es una película maravillosa y, una vez más, es educativa, es positiva. Es una gran oportunidad para ustedes de apreciar a sí mismos cuán maravillosa es nuestra comunidad. Así que con eso me gustaría dar este certificado de reconocimiento en nombre de la ciudad de Los Ángeles. A los miembros del castillo y a los que trataron esta maravillosa pieza de trabajo de una jornada sin un mexicano. Gracias.
Señor Reyes. Es como, el señor Cardenas está tomando sus fotos, solo quiero compartir con mis colegas. Y los amigos están escuchando que hace un tiempo me conocí a mi abuelo, que tiene cien años. Y es de Azuma, México. Y lo que me empeoró fue que entendía que él era un agricultor. Esencialmente plantaba semillas. Y aquí estoy, en este ambiente internacional, estamos hablando de economías internacionales. Estamos hablando de esa cuerda umbilical que da fuerza y sustancia a nuestras comunidades. Y ahora más que nunca, nuestros jóvenes deben entender que si hablan dos o tres lenguas. Van a resonar más adelante cuando establecen sus carreras. Está bien hablar más de una lengua. Está bien hablar español o chino, o cualquier lengua del Pacífico Sur. Para su futuro, su carrera y su habilidad de ser parte de la sociedad que es el mundo internacional. Me encanta lo que has hecho hoy, cardenaz. Espero que el mensaje salga. No sobrevivimos en una isla, somos parte de una comunidad gigante que se llama el mundo. Y tener estas lenguas y tener estas habilidades solo nos benefician. Especialmente en el hemisferio occidental, cuando el setenta por ciento de los ciudadanos habla español. Así que muchas gracias.
Gracias nuevamente, señor cardenaz. Y señor Reyes, ¿su presentación está lista? Mientras el señor Reyes acude al palacio, madame Kirk, ¿podría llamarse a la sala?
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Labange, Ledlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Virigosa, Weiss, Nine, Padilla. Diez miembros presentes en la sala, señor presidente.
Muchas gracias, la Cámara está oficialmente en sesión. Señor Reyes.
Gracias, señor presidente. Hoy es un gran día, tenemos mucho que celebrar. Y uno de los grandes eventos que tenemos es un movimiento que ha estado tomando bastante impulso. Quiero agradecer a Tom Labange por unir esto. Fue su motion, que quería establecer el River Appreciation Day. Así que Tom, no sé dónde estás, pero gracias. Probablemente estés viendo esto esta noche, sabiendo cuán dedicado eres al Consejo. Pero quiero agradecerle por unir este día. En la audiencia encontrarán a muchos de los defensores del vecindario. encontrarán a muchos de los ciudadanos involucrados en la ciudad, en esta movilidad. Verán mucha emoción, mucha energía que ha estado construyendo. Y lo bello de esto es que estamos todos hablando de una visión a largo plazo y todos estamos luchando por victorias a corto plazo. Y esa es la naturaleza de esta emoción. Así que me gustaría llamar a mis colegas de la Cámara, John Perry, Eric Garcetti. Me gustaría venir, este es el comité river del comité. Wendy Grohl, creo que puede venir, no estoy seguro. Sí, ella lo está, así que debería estar en camino. Y desafortunadamente Tom Labange no está con nosotros hoy. Esto es lo que vamos a identificar como los premios del río anual. Durante los últimos años, las comunidades, comunidades diversas y grupos de defensa han comenzado a trabajar. Con la ciudad para revitalizar y desarrollar la Riva de Los Ángeles. Nuevos parques, calles de bicicleta, el corazón público se ha desarrollado en los bancos. Otro trabajo está planeado a través de nuevos parques, oleadas de aguas, proyectos de calidad de agua. Todos estos esfuerzos están siendo realizados para beneficiar a la comunidad y aumentar la conciencia pública del río. Asimismo, los recursos naturales más preciosos de la ciudad. Y estos recursos vienen de muchas formas. Necesitamos pensar en nuestra agua en los próximos 15, 20, 25 años. Necesitamos pensar en cómo unirnos y celebrar la belleza de nuestros puertos. De nuestros parques naturales que hemos cementado con freeways y otros tipos de usos. Que desafortunadamente ha tomado una experiencia de muchas generaciones en el pasado. Así que como parte de este día, quiero agradecer a nuestro comisionero, el comisionero Reese, gracias por sus trabajos públicos. Asimismo por su trabajo duro. Pero como parte de este día, estamos honrando a cuatro grupos locales, así como a individuos que han hecho importantes contribuciones a nuestro sistema del río. Y creamos tres categorías. Una es un miembro de la comunidad, dos es un grupo de comunidad y tres es un empleado público. Me gustaría invitar al cardenaz Wendy Grohl, ella ha estado con nosotros. Esto no fue fácil, pero creo que nuestra primera try fue una elección tremenda. Miembros de la Cámara, en este momento me da un gran placer anunciar el ganador de este año en la Riva de los 2004. Como defensor del río. Con gran honor, me gustaría invocar a la señora Dorothy Green. La señora Dorothy Green es la cero en el movimiento del agua en California y en el país. Ella nos hizo conscientes de los problemas del agua, del río y de nuestro medio ambiente. Siempre en una forma colaborativa. Ella es la corredora, la visionaria, la líder y el seguidor cuando siente que ayuda. Ella también es universalmente amorosa y representa a toda la ciudad y todos sus esfuerzos por los ríos y el agua. Y tengo que compartir con ustedes. Dorothy Green ha sido muy clara. Que no solo ve el problema ambiental, el problema del agua, sino que reconoce el problema del pueblo. Viene a ver cómo estas comunidades que han sido relegadas a estos bolsos industriales en los que han encerrado el río, también están sufriendo. Así que para ella, no es solo el río y el agua y el problema regional, sino cómo estamos regresando ese nutrición, ese sentido de salud. Ese sentido de relajación para todos los jóvenes y para todas las comunidades que no tuvieron esa representación en cuerpos como estos. Que no tuvieron esa representación en el estado, en el nivel federal, en el nivel municipal. Y ella ha hecho muy clara que este es un objetivo que necesitamos lograr. Y para tu tenacidad, para tu visión y para tu amor a nuestras comunidades, quiero agradecerle, Dorothy Green. Con gran honor presento esta resolución. to congratulate you, Dorothy Green, and with great honor present this resolution. Celebrating that achievement.
Thank you. This really is an honor to be recognized by the city of Los Angeles, Councilman Reyes, who's been among the leaders in trying to restore the river and his communities along the river, and the other council people that are here behind me. I really feel honored and privileged to have been able to do this work, to bring forth the effort of cooperation and coordination between the various government agencies to work with the bureaucracy of the city of Los Angeles and the county of Los Angeles and the other cities in the region. To put forth a real vision for what can be around our rivers locally, and it can only happen with this kind of collaborative, collegial working together, which is just so very important to all of us. Thank you.
Gracias. Thank you, Dorothy Green. With great pleasure, I'd like to introduce Councilman Jan Perry. She's been one of the stalwarts. She's actually joined me on different trips in different parts of the country, has seen what the river can become. What's exciting is to have her participation and her support in how we can link up this very complicated water system. I want to thank her for her hard work and her collaboration as well. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. And it's a real pleasure to present this next award, and this is the winner of the Public Employee Award, Mr. Clark Robbins, if he could join me here at the podium. Clark is a very special individual because he has almost single-handedly saved our historic bridges here in downtown, our bridge from Little Tokyo to Boyle Heights, the beautiful historic bridges that we enjoy every day and see in so many movies. Through his commission, and this is his commitment, not just his job, but he has a commitment and a passion, the city's historic bridges are now part of our National American History Engineering Record and are valued as national historic bridges. His work has created historic place markers for our river revitalization. And just a side note, he's a forty-year city employee who absolutely loves his job. His passion and dedication have brought national attention to Los Angeles, and he continues his legacy by helping to educate the next generation of city engineers about the importance of bridge preservation for our great city. So it's a real pleasure to present this award to him today. Clark?
Thank you very much for this award. A hundred years ago, almost a hundred years ago, the people of Los Angeles had a vision, vision of a great rural city, and they built their bridges as monuments, fitting for a city that fitted, filled that vision. And I want to thank you very much for allowing us, City Councilists, to refurbish those bridges and make them good for the next hundred years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Nice, I'd like to call my colleague, Councilman Eric R. S. As you all know, he's been a strong advocate for the environment at many different levels. He has been promoting many cutting-edge ideas. There's this notion called daylighting, which means you find all of the old tributaries, all the connecting systems that come to the river, five ways to open those up in our neighborhoods. And you talk about bringing back a sense of refreshness and life into our neighborhoods that have been run over with asphalt and cement. That would be a great way to continue moving the benefits of water into our neighborhoods. And with that, I'd like to introduce Councilman Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Good morning, everybody. It is a great honor to join with everybody here celebrating the beginning of our revitalization of the Los Angeles River. We are all here today, the backbone of this city and really the genesis of this city as well. And I'm here to honor Northeast Trees, an amazing community group that has not only been a group that looks at our urban forestry, but has taken that as a jumping-off point to look at the entire urban environment, including our watersheds. And they are the recipients this year of our community group award. The Northeast Trees fundamentally understands that we are tied together by ecology here. When you look at the freeways that we have here in the city, they are where the old main roads used to be. Those main roads are where the old pathways used to be, and those pathways mirror our watershed. So when we think of the flow of traffic, it literally is where the flow of water is, it's just sometimes beneath us, where the old streams used to be throughout this region, we have put them underground, so when there is rainwater or other seasonal water that it actually gets washed out to sea still, unfortunately, it goes underground and we never see it. Northeast Trees was founded in 1989, and they've demonstrated incredible knack about thinking globally and acting locally. They've shown leadership in the broad, as we like to call it, coalition of the passionate here, who worked tirelessly to improve the river, proposing design solutions to address complex ecological problems. And they went great funding for their ideas, which helps push our thinking and our actions forward too. So, there are many different accomplishments that we could talk about, but let me talk about a few of the things with the Los Angeles River specifically. Northeast Trees designed and built a series of pocket parks that formed today's Los Angeles River Greenway, through Atwater Village to Allee's Valley. Incredible artwork, gateways, things that evoke the nature that is still part of the river and also that brings people to see what an amazing treasure we have. They helped to advocate for the Taylor Yard State Park, were a critical part of that alliance as well. And in my district, not right on the LA River, but in a place where the Bimini Baths, which are natural hot springs by Third and Vermont, that for years people used to visit, write home to folks on the East Coast or other places about how sunny it was in January in Los Angeles. The Bimini Sluice Ecology Park we opened, we vacated a street there. They designed that park, and what it does is it takes some of that water out from underground, brings it out so that young people and neighbors in the area can learn about what we throw into our streets and how that winds up in our waterways and eventually out in the bay. Helps clean it up, and then takes it back underground for the rest of their journey. It's a real model for cleaning up, educating, and inspiring communities with daylighting. They've also prepared a feasibility study on ways of making natural-looking improvements to the Royal Secco, and they've also worked with the city of Azusa to improve native landscaping in the foothills of Angeles National Forest. And lastly, they've recruited, educated, and employed young people living in communities along the Los Angeles River. Living lightly in our watershed booklet is a model for understanding what we can do here, and every one of us in the city of Los Angeles should read this to understand how our watershed works, how our own fate is tied into it. And with that, I'd like to invite Scott Wilson to accept this on behalf of many people from Northeast Trees. Please give him a round of applause, and we'd love to hear some words from him too. Congratulations.
Thank you very much for the honor to give it to me. We work hard at what we do. It's teamwork. My job is to come here and accept this as gratefully and graciously as possible, and the rest of the group is busy doing their job and creating more exciting things for the future, environmental. As a teacher, I have been very proud of what we have been able to do, not by myself. This is a team activity, and I'm standing up here representing a whole body of other people that work on the river. There have been a number of hearings when this is about all the support we had for the environment, but that is long since passed. We have never had such a well-educated, such a dedicated group of environmentalists serving in the city, both in the city council and in the staff as we have now. It gives me great pride to be able to stand up here and listen to our leaders talk about some of the technical things that we have been addressing over the years, the new concepts, and much of it hasn't existed the rest of the United States. One of the projects that has taken place by the Army Corps of Engineers in Florida has been the removal of fifty miles of channels of the Opichi River, Okissimi River, which was channelized some time ago, and they discovered it was a mistake, and so they're now have removed or removing the channel. And we're looking forward to doing the same thing here. We have our first block of concrete to come out of the channel, and that's going to be symbolic, more than that is going to be the beginning of reality. It took us two hundred years to get to the condition that we have in our fine city, and it's going to take us a number of years later, it's incremental. We build our little parks one at a time, and they serve as an example to the community, to our leaders, of how it could be done. We didn't start with a master plan, we're developing that now. We started with an idea, and we have planted some twenty thousand, we have planted some twenty thousand trees in the Los Angeles River plus the parks. But the big thing probably is the education that we've given to young people who are going to carry this message on in the future. And I want to thank all of those that have made this possible, again, including the staff, all the other nonprofit groups that have been involved with this, the various officials at the city level, at the county level, at the state level, and hopefully at the federal level, to make this a better place to live. Thank you much for this honor, I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me take an opportunity.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. Our next council member, Councilman Wendy Grohl, just the other month was able to celebrate the grand opening of what a model could look like for the river. How can I actually engage not only the river, but also the community alongside it, both commercial and residential? And I just want to thank her for her hard work. As you know, the river is a regional issue, so her representing the San Fernando Valley is just ever, is very important, because we know that the river begins in the valley, and the watershed and its origins is in the area in which it's very important to the whole system. So I want to thank her and introduce her for her next presentation. Thank you, Wendy.
Ms. Grohl.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. And as I said, that day when we are in Studio City, your leadership and vision, and most importantly, dream of what the river can and will look like in the city of Los Angeles is quite extraordinary, and we are indebted to you for your commitment on the river. Colleagues, today I have two presentations. One is to the Sherman Oaks Village Gardeners. This group of individuals began the vision of a river that we could use in the San Fernando Valley. They saw the river not, excuse me, for its potential, not for its lifeless concrete. So years before, we were talking about revitalization, this group went out and actually did it. They created a community space where there had not been one. This nonprofit group of local residents landscaped riverbanks along both sides of the river in Sherman Oaks. And they maintain it still by cleaning the vegetation, cleaning the quarter-mile of riverbank in coordination with our wonderful Department of Public Works. Since 1994, the Sherman Oaks Gardeners have come to grow, grown more than paying, excuse me, have grown to more than paying a hundred members and over four hundred volunteers. It is this community garden that has created a very special area along the Los Angeles River for all of us to enjoy and treasure. And it is for their vision and leadership today that we present them with the 2004 River Community Advocate Group Award, and we have Annette Fuller here today representing the Village Gardeners of the Los Angeles River. Annette, could you come forward?
On behalf of everyone that has pulled a weed, dug a hole, and planted a plant in the LA Community River, I thank you for this award. The riverbanks to us have been like a blank canvas. Our purpose is to make it a beautiful work of art. Anybody that wants to can come down and help us out. Thank you very, very much.
My next presentation is to these wonderful children, and let's give them a great big hand. They have been so quiet and patient over here from Carpenter Avenue School. Since taking office, I have pushed not only to preserve open space, but looking at ways to create it. Parks and recreation are really our gifts to the next generation. For this and many other reasons, it is important that we move forward with our commitment to revitalize the Los Angeles River and leave it for our children to enjoy and preserve. But there's a key component that I think we sometimes overlook as we try to do these great and wonderful things for our community, and that is the education we can provide to our students as we're developing these projects. And therefore, I want to thank the River Project for their insistence that we include the next generation in the revitalization of the river, and it was through Melanie Winter's vision that the International River of Words contest came to Studio City. Four classrooms from Carpenter Elementary School and the Naturalist Academy from North Hollywood High School created original poems about the Los Angeles River. These students studied the history of the river, its value to a community, and our struggle to work with our friendly neighbors. And they created, I think what you'll hear today, forever will be part of our recently opened, as Ed mentioned, Los Angeles River Greenway in Studio City. And I have to tell you, my son has been there several times since we opened that Greenway, and enjoying that area of Studio City to not quite walk, but stroll there. But I have four very special guests today, in addition to the entire class you see here from Carpenter Avenue School. And we do have proclamations for all of you that will present in the back. But I'd like to ask four young people to come up. Olivia Wilkie, who is age seven, who is going to read Passing Down My Street. Also, Carly Jackson, who is a fourth grader, who will read The River. And lastly, excuse me, and then home is ninth grader Melissa Lopez, and then finally, eleventh grader Denise Guzman, reading as always a poem. So let me, first, we're going to have Olivia speak. This is Olivia, who is also a very good Girl Scout cookie seller. She got me for a lot of money in Girl Scout cookies in my neighborhood, so Olivia, go ahead.
The title is called Passing Down My Street. The shiny river made out of clouds passing down my street. I always see you hiding there, so let me take a peek, but then you go and I cry.
Thank you, and our next is actually, my mistake, is fifth grader Carly Jackson.
River slowly flowing, river flying like a bird on summer breeze, river rolling, rushing, rapid. River smooth, slowly, swiftly, softly, silently. River life-birbling from its depths. River long ago. River still peaceful, but polluted. River murdered man. River laced with trash, strangled. River immaculate of life. River trashed and trapped. River destroyed and dead. River today. River twisting, turning. River slithering like a snake. River bierbling and beautiful. River surprising and secretive. River strong and smooth. River wild and live. River in the future.
Thank you.
Great, and our next presentation... Great, and our next presentation is Melissa Lopez.
Every year, I return to Mexico and relish in the music that glows into my ears and heart. The songs of the trees and the butterflies, the beauty of my land. I have marveled at the way the sun glimmers and shines as it takes a dip in the underwater city that is a river. It's called El Arroyo, a natural habitat. Natural, what a beautiful word. We need more natural in L.A. Why does the L.A. River have concrete? El Arroyo doesn't. Why must it be contaminated? El Arroyo isn't. May Arroyo gives protection, warmth, love, and a home to those who need it. You have lived for many years. Our L.A. River needs more natural. Let's let go the concrete age.
Now we have Denise Guzman, who will be reading as always.
As always, penetrate, filter, through soil down to the field with the dry roots away. Evaporate and fly and swirl into white pups. Dance and feast with the winds to tune the happiest waltz. Pour and wash with your touch roots and alleys. Run, race, pebbles and the curvy meadows. Capture and catch the integrity of reflection and multiply that of the sun. Create and compose a melody with the slapping of your rocks. Nurture and feed the infant from the purest, tallest breast. Calm and tame more than your children's thirst.
And we also have Edna Rojas, who I think wanted to also read her poem.
Inside the Lines. Isn't that enough to see the sunrise? Is it not enough to see it set? Can it be that the rain only falls to nourish that which is partly true? Or is it that the river flows so swiftly just to say it did? Thoughts in my mind flow like water in a stream of consciousness. Each drop a memory, a photograph, and an album. Darkness is the absence of light, but without it, light would not be. Just like a river without water would not exist. Flow freely, forget about coloring inside the lines. Imagination is a key. Run like the wind through the fields. Cry me a river that leads to a notion sadly misguided by the wrinkles on your face.
Ed, last but not least, I'd ask Melanie to come up, just to say a few words and to thank her for putting this whole program together with all of our children. Thank you, Councilmember Gruel. These, these children, students, and young adults that have participated in this program and the other students we work with in the city of Los Angeles are really what keep us going. They are the future. They are an incredible joy. They have so much imagination, and as we look and talk about the vision for the future of Los Angeles, this is where it's coming from. I know we have some very talented architects and engineers and planners in L.A., but I guarantee you that the way the river is going to look in the future is going to come from the passion and the imaginations of these students right here. They have given all of us so much. Their words are truly heartfelt and wise. And I want to thank them for their hard work and for teaching everyone about what the river means to them and what it can mean to everyone in Los Angeles. So thank you, guys. I have one quick question for all the kids. Before this project, did you know we had a river in Los Angeles? You did? Well, see, they're smart kids. They're from the second council district, of course. But thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas, and thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you. And you know that's very powerful, beautiful poetry when a child can say wrinkles across your face and get applause from all of us who are a little bit older than them. That was very beautiful.
Councilor Justin, closing, I just want to take a minute to thank all the elected officials that have helped us in the past. We've had Senator Polanco, Lincoln Northeast Trees, who are all funding for that program. We've had Supervisor Roy Molina, who stepped up in a big way in the northeast area. Our Congressman Lucille Robialler has been tremendous. Congressman Berman and Congressman Sherman have been there for us. And of course, we've had Speaker of the House, then State Assemblyman Antonio Verigosa stepping up. So without them, the momentum that we feel today wouldn't be here. Just want to say thank you publicly for the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, for your contribution as well and your efforts. Mr. Garcetti, do you have another presentation? We have presentations from Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Weiss, and Ms. Gruel. Is Mr. Weiss?
Mr. Chair, if you wouldn't mind if we could take 10 out of order and vote on that, because there are two people here who would very much like to participate in the University of Southern California's commencement exercises today. And there are no cards. There's already been a public hearing, and I don't think it's a matter of any controversy.
Okay, we haven't started that portion of the meeting yet, but we have Mr. Parks ready to do his presentation at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask Jerry Perman to come up. And also, he has with him today Acting General Manager of ITA, Deira Bradshaw, and also his director, Roger Hernandez. We're here today to honor Jerry for his many years of work. He's going to retire from the city of L.A. If you don't recognize Jerry's name, let me just bring it to your attention. He's called Mr. Payroll. So for any city employee, there's an appreciation, that number one, that your checks come on time, that they're accurate, and he's the one that makes sure that happens. But just to give you a little background, he's a graduate of UCLA, has a degree in mathematics. He's had a career with the city that started in 1972. Came here as a trainee. He's been in the same department, although we've changed the name of that department three times. He started on the personnel systems that dealt with employment. He then supported that system for 10 years. He then was promoted to a programmer and became, began to work in the programmer analyst class. He then began to work on the retirement system and the pension system, which I appreciate, because my check comes every first of the month. He also then moved into the payroll system. And I'm sure that he has had the frustration that many of us have had, that we've had at least four or five start and stops on revising our current payroll system. I understand that the Pacer system now is the first effort to deal with it incrementally, and that we will eventually end up with a payroll system that actually works. We also see that it does benefit that you stay within one department. He started and promoted through this effort from programmer analyst all the way up to programmer analyst five, working primarily on three major systems and also weathering the storm of three name changes. We certainly are here today to thank him for his several years of work within the city, that he is the senior statesman of the payroll system. During his career, he's touched all of our lives, because every other week we get a blue card or we get a, a automatic deposit slip within our bank accounts. And so we want to say thank you, Jerry, for all the things you've done. You've touched the lives of employees of this city in a variety of ways, whether they are active employees or retired employees. I'd like to ask Jerry Perman to come up at this time.
Thank you, Council and Councilmember Parks. We appreciate the recognition of a very important employee to all of us, given he is Mr. Payroll. Jerry, congratulations for your many years of dedication and public service. You're a true tribute not only to the Information Technology Agency, but to public service as a whole. And that's the best thing about the city of L.A. is the employees that really do the work. And Jerry does it and keeps the payroll going, so congratulations.
I'd like to thank the city council and the city for this honor. It's been a privilege and an honor working for the city for the last 32 years. I've, during that time, I've worked on human resource systems, and I've worked on retirement and pension payroll, retroactive payroll, and the regular city payroll. And during that time, with the, the great, wonderful help of people in the payroll section of ITA and also the people in the Controller's Office, I can say with some assurance that we've never missed a single payroll and that during that time, we produced more than 20 million paychecks for city employees, including the city council. It's been a wonderful 32 years, and I have every bit of confidence that the remaining people in the payroll section who are working on Pacer and the people in the Controller's Office, as well as the contractors, will be able to replace the legacy payroll system with a new database managed payroll system. And I look forward to hearing more about that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
First order of business is approval of the minutes.
Okay.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
That's deemed approved?
On the regular agenda, item number 10, I believe there's a request to take that matter out of order by Councilmember Perry.
Without objection, we'll take up item 10?
That is an item for which public hearing has been held. It's a Housing Community Economic Development Committee report.
Okay, Ms. Perry, would you like to open on that item?
I don't need to make a comment, other than I've spent extensive public hearings. And I would ask for an I-vote today.
Okay. Seeing no public comment, any discussion? Open the roll. Close the roll. What's that?
Thirteen eyes.
Thirteen eyes, that item's approved.
Next item, Mr. President, item number one is an item noticed for public hearing, and there are cards on that item. Do you wish to call that special?
First of all, is Mr. Garcetti's not ready? Okay, so we'll go to item one.
And there are public hearing cards on that item. Do you wish to call that one special?
We'll call that item special.
Item number two is also a public hearing item, and I believe there are cards on that item, and there's a request to continue that, to continue for one week.
Request to continue by Ms. Perry, granted?
And that would be May 21st.
Okay, that item would be heard on May 21st.
Next items are items three through eight, and those are also public hearing items. No cards have been submitted.
Okay.
And I don't know if any council members wish to call those special.
Anybody wish to call items three to eight special? Any items three to eight special? Seeing none? Okay.
Do you wish to take a vote on that? Open the roll.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Those items are approved.
Next items are items nine through 10, and those are items for which public hea- excuse me, nine through 11. And item number 10 has already been acted on, so that would be just nine and 11 before council.
Items nine and 11. No one calling those items special? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Thirteen eyes, those items are approved.
Next items, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have not been held, items 12 through 38, and 10 votes are required for consideration. And I don't believe there are any cards, there's a card on item number 38.
Okay. Item number 38, we'll hold, that item is called special?
Call that item special. And if, I was going to ask, it doesn't seem like I might need to, but we have significant religious leaders here this morning to like speak on this item, and I was going to ask if we could take it out of order. You might want to wait until the other councilors come in.
Okay, we'll, we'll keep that in mind, we'll do so. Thank you.
And that would be 12 through 37 or before council.
Seek the balance of the items, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Those items are approved.
Next item, Mr. President, is on the continuation agenda. That's item number 39, and public hearing has been held on that item.
No public comment, cards on item 39? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Thirteen eyes, that item is approved.
And that would complete the agenda and go back to the items called special. Do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Yes, we'll take public comment at this time. First, we have Nicholas Oatway.
Nicholas Oatway. Good morning, my name is Nicholas Oatway. I'm an architect, and I live at 4852 Sunny Slope Avenue in Sherman Oaks. Let me get my glasses here, I can read this. Honorable city council members, it's a pleasure to be able to address you this morning. I'm addressing you concerning historical preservation in the city of Los Angeles and maintaining the presence of, and a positive attitude towards historical preservation. One way we understand ourselves and appreciate and build confidence as a group or a neighborhood is by embracing our history, warts and flowers. This is not, I don't mean living in the past, but accepting, studying, and learning from history's lessons. This may only be a subliminal experience as we rush down a city's sidewalk past a decades or century-old multifaceted facade or street, or as my wife and I experienced, living in Chase Knowles Garden Apartments and Bundalos in Sherman Oaks. A site that your council, prompted by grassroots neighborhood support, has designated a historical landmark, protected in part by a Mills Act contract. One walk through the Chase site illustrates how multifamily housing can engender the democratic spirit of providing the greatest good for the greatest number. Without historical preservation and the full staffing of the Cultural Heritage Commission, we are put in a position of cutting off the past, history, and its lessons. We are then in the unfavorable position of building a future based not on the greatest good for the greatest number, but on the greatest good for the best financed lobbyists and their clients who have the money. I urge you in your deliberations regarding the financing of the Cultural Heritage Commission and its staff to maintain, if you cannot see to, increase the staffing for the Cultural Heritage Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Gonzalo Gomez. Is Gonzalo Gomez here? Gonzalo Gomez. Okay, next, we go to Francisco Moreno Cárdenas. Francisco. Pase por delante, por favor. Come forward.
Esperen un segundo para el intérprete, por favor. I come in representation of the garden that is between Alameda and Long Beach around 41st. We are working and we hope that you can still let us work there on the garden. Because we need it. I come in representation of the garden that is between Alameda and Long Beach around Forty-First. We are working and we hope that you can still let us work there on the garden. Because we need it. To continue working there. Because we're retired and we maintain ourselves there comfortably. My name is Maria Rodriguez. I represent South Farmers, Forty-First and Alameda. I want us to let us keep working there, please. There are people there that are sick, people that without legs, that they put a lot of effort to come ahead. We want us to let us, please, there. And we are there, and we're not leaving. Hello, good morning. My name is Anna Maria Skivel. And we are on the garden of Forty-First. We want us to help, we want you to help us to keep the garden. We are here, we're not leaving.
Okay, we're here again, one more time, just like the speakers ahead of me have been spoken in respects to the question of the land. Earlier today, I heard some words that have been spoken to about a day without a Mexican. Well, this is the real thing. It's not a movie. This is a real thing that we're talking about, the land and the people who grow food on the land. This is not something that's to laugh at. This is not something to make fun of. And this is not something to talk about, say that it's great to sit down and have some popcorn and a hot dog and watch a movie. This is real. The real question of the land, the real question of the people that work the land. And that question is being raised about that movie. It's good to have movies, it's good to have time for diversions, but the reality is, is we brought here to the city council. This is the real thing. This is the real deal. Aquí estamos, y no nos vamos. Tierra Libertad.
Thank you very much. And let me just, for the moment, read all the names of cards submitted. On behalf of South Central Farmers, Gonzalo Gomez was here, Francisco Moreno Cárdenas, Moreno Montes, Miguel Ángel Pérez, Maria Jesús Rodríguez, Salo Juan Fernández, Manuela Skivel, Maria Dionisio Oro, and Maria Isabel Hernández. Thank you for being here. Our next speakers in their general public comments are Murray Burns, followed by Jim McQuiston, Stephen Sasse, Rosalie Grola, and others to follow.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to ask you to think for just a moment about Paris. Picture it in your mind. There's a reason why people go there, isn't there? There's a reason why tourists go there. The beauty of this historically preserved city is virtually unsurpassed. In nineteen sixty, hardly anybody ever went to Savannah, Georgia. Just $200,000 a year in tourist revenues. Twenty-five years later, tourist revenues had risen to over $150 million a year, a nine-hundred-fold increase. The preservation and rehabilitation of Old Savannah was responsible for this, and it wasn't government money, it was private money. Suppose tourism in L.A. only jumped one-tenth of the increase in Savannah, would a ninety-fold increase in tourist revenue help Los Angeles? We can do this in Los Angeles, and we can do it with private money. All we need the city council to do is to keep the Cultural Heritage Board staffing, and staffing, at its current levels. Let's give a reason for more people to come to Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If I can take a quick pause in general public comment, only to welcome the mayor, who's joined us, and along with Councilman Garcia, has a presentation at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I want to ask the public's indulgence, appreciate the public speakers allowing us to finish this last special presentation. And I know it's not agendaized, but I agree with what our speakers were just saying, cultural heritage, and I appreciate them, and I know we'll hear some more voices shortly. We do have a special guest, the mayor of Los Angeles, Mr. Jim Hahn, in our chambers. We'd like to welcome him, as always. And we're here for a special occasion today to honor a member of the city family who is moving on, former Deputy Mayor Joy Chen. Please give her a round of applause. And her friends and family, her parents, Ray and Beatrice, others who are watching, no doubt on Channel Thirty-Five, or with us in spirit, are here today to honor her great work. And I had the wonderful opportunity, in my capacity as chair of the Housing Community and Economic Development Committee, to work very closely. And I want to thank Mayor Hahn for having the wisdom and the foresight to have Deputy Mayor on workforce development and to have that one be Joy Chen, because the impact that you were able to have, Mr. Mayor, and that we will continue to have in the programs that you have put forward to make sure that we have a workforce for the 21st century here in Los Angeles, to use a little bit of city money to leverage a lot of training and education, is probably one of the most critical missions we have. But Joy Chen, in particular, was a real superstar, somebody who came to Los Angeles from the private sector, background in real estate, who understood and who understands how to get deals done, but somebody who also brought some vision to Los Angeles in the sense that, supporting Mayor Hahn and the city council's belief that we have tremendous challenges in educating our workforce. Whenever we talk to businesses, the number-one thing they say, more than business tax, more than locating their businesses physically in the city, more than DWP, more than anything else, they say, "We need good workers." And the statistics are startling. We have one of the lowest graduation rates in the entire United States. We have the lowest literacy rate of any major city in the United States. Mayor Hahn, through Joy Chen's great work and the entire team here, and all the work of your offices, stood up and formed the Free Cash for College program, which became the largest college scholarship fair in the country in just two years. The Workforce Literacy Project, which brought together literally the hundreds of groups that work on literacy in this city, and for the first time, put them in one place to begin to act strategically. Those acts that Joy oversaw in her time here brought together players that we often don't see here at City Hall, people who sometimes don't see the city as the place to go because they work on education, or they work on literacy, or healthcare, or other issues that aren't our specialization. Well, Joy proved that with a little bit of yeast, you can make an incredible loaf of bread. And she was able to show that with a little bit of the money that we committed to, and the mayor stepped forward and had the leadership to, to put in place, working together with the Chamber of Commerce, we were able to change, and we are changing, that terrain right here in Los Angeles. Joy is incredibly bright. She is going to be recruiting people for the nonprofit sector in her new capacity as a headhunter here in Los Angeles, and I'll let her speak about that a little bit more. I do want to say also that Rusty Hammer, the head of our Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce, wanted to be here today. He is unable to today, and our thoughts are with him, but he has been tremendous a partner in this, and has worked very closely with Joy in these projects. And I know that he is with us very strongly here today, and he wanted to pass on his best wishes to Joy as she moves on. She'll be in Germany this summer, the German Marshall Fund Scholarship, with a lot of young people, putting together those connections. And I know she's very active at the Pacific Council here, but I want to thank Joy for her friendship, for her vision, and for making a difference in the citizens of Los Angeles. And with that, I'd like to turn over to Mayor Hahn to say a few words. Well, it's a real honor to have you here today, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Garcetti. Mr. President, members of the council, met Joy Chen in a moment of crisis here in the city, immediately after September eleventh. We recognized that that was going to have devastating impacts on our national economy and our local economy as well. Joy came as someone who volunteered to work with George Kiefer and others as we came up with our economic recovery plan for the city of Los Angeles. Programs like lifting ourselves up by our own bootstraps, Dine L.A. and Shop L.A., but also the compassion of working with California Community Foundation and organized laborers who came up with a way for working families who found themselves out of work, how they could get their utility bills paid, keep the lights on, keep the warmth of the heat on in their homes. We looked at it holistically, on how we could get this city out of a jam, and I was very fortunate that then-Joy agreed, because we were so impressed with the work she did there, to come help us with workforce development in the city. And her identification, as Councilman Garcetti pointed out, of education as the key to workforce development here was extremely important. The program with Rusty Hammer, Free Cash for College, amazing program, over 10,000 students coming to help get scholarships. You know, Joy and I were at locations where we saw tears going down the faces of parents who never dreamed that their children would be able to go to college. So much of this was the fact that they didn't have access to information. We know in our society, information is power. And Joy Chen understood that to empower people, she had to get them that information. Working with the Workforce Development Board, we also identified adult literacy as a challenge for us in this city. We put together a great literacy project. As we got all the different people involved with different literacy programs in the city. Come together, come with strategy. Nobody, nobody, there's no gap in the city. As we were trying to make our city more literate, have our workforce ready for the economy of this century. Joy Chen may not be very big. But I don't know anyone who is a bigger thinker than Joy Chen. She sees the big picture. She knows what we need to do. She knows what we need to achieve, the results of making this a city that works for everyone. And I'm very proud of the work that Joy Chen has done. It's going to be very lasting here at City Hall, and I wish her the best in her new endeavors.
Ladies and gentlemen, Joy Chen. We'll also forward here from Joy. We want to hear from Ms. Perry, followed by Ms. Hahn, Mr. Zine, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Weiss.
Joy, a lot of people are going to say nice things about you today, and you're an accomplished, intelligent, focused, and visionary individual, but all you are is a testament to the upbringing that you have had by your parents standing behind you. And I just want to acknowledge that, them, and to acknowledge what a wonderful job that they have done in raising such a tremendous woman who has contributed so much to our city. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to rise and say how much I have enjoyed working with Joy Chen and how much she brought to the mayor's office and to the city of Los Angeles. As the mayor said, you are a big, big thinker. And when you look at the programs which you helped initiate and really get off the ground, cash for college, literacy for the workforce, I remember a very, it was really an emotional event at the paint manufacturer in South Central Los Angeles, not far from where our father had a gas station. And here was an owner of a business who felt like he was either going to have to relocate or close down because his workforce was unable to read the simple things of ingredients that were put together to make certain kinds of paints. And that program was so successful that his workforce had become literate. He was able to save his business and in fact expand it. That was a great moment, and you should have been very proud of that. I also remember when you and I went to the home of the council general from China, and we met with the All-Chinese Women's Federation. And we sat there and talked at lunch about how we might join the women of this country and the women of China in really doing what we all believed in, and that was empowering women to really take control of their lives and invest in their own futures. But I will say, one of the great things you ever were able to accomplish was when you encouraged the mayor and his sister to go shopping one day, and to agree upon a present for our mother. And it was probably one of the first times we ever shopped together. We ever agreed on picking out an outfit for our mother. She wears it to this day and looks at it with pride. And it was a great moment for us. And again, it helped promote Shop L.A., which I think was the right thing to do in the wake of September eleventh, to try to revitalize our economy. Thank you, Joy, for all you did. Your new employer is lucky to have you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. And you want to enjoy it to your parents. You raised a beautiful lady who has accomplished a lot in her short time here at City Hall. And I remember your captivating smile, always a gracious hello, and with Rusty always concerned about his recovery, the emails I received. And you've got a heart of gold, a spirit that shines, and I wish you the best in your future. And it's wonderful to have your parents hear all these wonderful comments, because I'm sure when you were a little girl, they wondered, "Is she going to be a good girl? Or is she going to be like Janice Hahn?" She's going to be a good girl. And Janice Hahn's a good lady, too. I'm not sure. Anyway, congratulations to you on your new adventure in life.
Mr. Reyes.
Joy, thank you so much for all your hard work. I know at times the committees might have been a little bit hard, but your response was tremendous. I appreciated your heartfelt effort in trying to address the needs of some of the poorest parts of the city. And your focus on that endeavor, I always appreciate. I thank the mayor for having you join us in working with us. Your parents must be very proud. Great example, a great model for many, many young people in the city of L.A. Thank you so much.
Ms. Grol.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm so pleased, Mayor and Eric Garcetti, for you and your supporters behind you and family. Joy, it's been a wonderful opportunity for me to get to know you during your tenure in the mayor's office. And you are very passionate about your issues, whether it be the cash for, you know, college, which I think was your baby that you really followed through. And I still hear kids talking about it. And you can know that you truly made a difference here in City Hall. There are a few people sometimes that can leave here and go on to new opportunities who can say that, that you touched someone's life. And you did that with a number of young people and individuals and organizations and companies in the business world that you touched. And so I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for all of your passion and commitment. It rubbed off on a lot of us here, so thank you very much.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's great to see you, Joy, and it's nice to see you here with your friends and your family. And everything everybody has said is absolutely true, and you absolutely deserve it. You leave your City Hall job with an unblemished reputation for integrity and for commitment to public service. There are a lot of people around here who are into local politics in one way or another, and it gets rather tiring at times. You were never one of those people. You were always focused on public policy. You came in as a public policy professional. You leave as a public policy professional, and then some. And the reputation that you have attained in the public policy community in Los Angeles is well-deserved, is very impressive, and I look forward to doing further public policy things with you in the future, because whether you serve in government as your principal occupation or not, I have no doubt that, you know, you just have this public policy commitment that's going to drive so much of what you do professionally coming years. Good luck to you, Joy.
Well, thank you all. This is just overwhelming. Thank you so much. Eric Garcetti, Chairman Garcetti of our Housing Community Economic Development Committee, and especially to Mayor Hahn for having provided me such an incredible opportunity at this incredible moment in the progress of our city, to serve in city government. It has been an amazing opportunity to serve with each of you individually on the city council. Boy, I leave public service so much more aware of the kind of commitment and the passion and the hard work that goes into each of your jobs. And I really salute all of you for all of you have done, the careers that you have given to public service. It's been my deep honor and privilege to serve with all of you on the big challenges facing the future of our city. To me, what makes Los Angeles special among all cities in the world is that the most entrepreneurial, hard-working, courageous people come here from all countries in the world with a single goal of making a better life for themselves and their children. And the collective efforts of all these people in L.A. working to achieve their dreams is what economists refer to as productivity. And all these efforts that we have put forward to helping people get the skills to support their families are an investment in the productivity of our region. We've been so lucky that we've had business leaders here in Los Angeles, from George Kiefer to Rusty Hammer and others, VICA and LAEDC,
Thirdly, if we practice conservation, we wouldn't have these budget crisis problems. If we stuck with the values that said, "We take care of what we have first. We don't rip things down and we make sure that these things that we find important are taken care of," we wouldn't have these issues. Thank you.
Mr. Bernstein, followed by Juliette Arroyo.
Thank you. Ken Bernstein with the Los Angeles Conservancy. We're very proud to be here today, joined, as you've already seen, by residents from all over the city, from the West Side to Boyle Heights in northeast L.A., San Fernando Valley, all unanimously urging you, on the eve of your budget deliberations, not to cut the historic preservation staffing for the city and not to cut the Mills Act program, which is our only financial incentive for historic preservation and rehabilitation. This is the engine that has really been driving the adaptive reuse projects we're seeing in downtown L.A. and now with the adaptive reuse ordinance available throughout the city. Just yesterday, we did a tour, the Conservancy and the Downtown Center Business Improvement District did a tour for 85 lenders from all over Los Angeles who want to invest in adaptive reuse projects. They toured housing projects throughout downtown and around the city. In each of those projects, the Mills Act was a key component in making those projects happen, and bankers and those who were responsible for those project pro formas made that case. For want of about $100,000 in the city budget, we are putting in jeopardy tens of millions of dollars of investment in every neighborhood of our city. So what we urge you to do next week, we know each of you care deeply about the historic resources in your own community, we urge you to act collectively next week and restore this funding so that the Mills Act incentive and the historic preservation program of the city can remain intact. Thank you very much.
Ms. Juliette Arroyo.
Hi, my name is Juliette Arroyo and I live in Garbanza. And I also work full-time as a historic preservation planner in Glendale. And when I found out that the cultural preservation department in Los Angeles only had three staff people, I was amazed. And I spoke with those three staff people and I learned their scope of the work they have to do for a city with such a large size and so many historic resources. I was amazed. So this is not, I was thinking that this department needs more staff, not less staff. Also, I'm concerned about historic preservation citywide, what's going on? Down the street from my house, there's stuccoing a craftsman, a beautiful craftsman home. They got to permit to do that. And it just seems like there's no one in the city that's got a perspective of historic preservation. And I'm trying to do what I can to stop this stuccoing, this beautiful craftsman, but it's being very difficult because there's not a program that's going on. And I urge you to actually not decrease the preservation program, but increase it.
Thank you very much. This concludes general public comment for today's meeting. Madam Kirk, next item, please.
Mr. President, there was a request from Councilmember Hahn to take item number 38 out of order.
Okay. Is there any objection?
With Ms. Hahn's indulgence, can we reconsider 39? There was an amendment circulated, there was a technical amendment. Can we just pass that? There's no comment that needs to...
Okay. And well, let's do that quickly first. Motion, members, to reconsider item 39. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item 39 now back before us. You do have an amendment that has been circulated.
I move 39A here with technical corrections.
Without objections, let's open the roll on 39 as amended. Mr. Smith, you want to speak on it?
Mr. Garcetti, the numbers from the original report and this report don't seem to match. I can't figure it out. And it looks like there's about $300,000 more.
I believe it was in savings. I don't know if the CDD representatives here, if not, we can hold on the table and go through the other stuff. Why don't, oh, we have, yeah. Why don't we invite the CIO, just real quick, just to clarify that. I'm sorry, Ms. Hahn. We'll get that real quick. Mr. Andrade.
Robert Andrade with the CIO. I'm sorry, your question, sir?
In the council agenda report, it shows a million dollars and $325,000 are appropriated for a million four originally. This report shows a million six something. So what is the difference? I didn't understand where that money came from.
The difference, I believe, the full amount has been appropriated and budgeted. It's a combination of both block grant dollars and general fund dollars. The general fund being $329,000 and change. The difference being is that the adjustment that it needed to take place for two-month contracts for continuation, because these items didn't come before this body in a timely fashion, they were heard in housing and community development and should have gone forthwith to budget and finance. However, because of the budget deliberations, they were delayed. As a result of that delay, there needs to be an adjustment to the funding. The total amount remains the same. It's just that different contractors are getting a different amount because of that one-month, two-month adjustment.
And that's coming from the block grant?
It's coming from block grant and the general fund. There is no additional general fund obligation, the same amount.
That's all right. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn, did you have a question on this item?
Okay, just to move the amendment.
Okay. On the item as amended, Madam Kirk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Once again, and now coming back to item 38. Mr. Parks.
I'm going to ask Ms. Hahn's indulgence. We just want to make a one-minute presentation regarding item one. Our expectation is that we would not, and hopefully from the committee's standpoint, we not discuss the budget today. And it will all be done starting 10 o'clock on Monday. We presented the material from the CLA's report. We'd asked you if you have any, we're not encouraging any new motions, but that you get them to the CLA as early as you can on Monday. My understanding is around noon, we'll be taking a break because there's an NAACP event on the South Lawn, so that we'll take a break for that. But I just want to encourage everyone to accept the material, read it, but that we not discuss it today and we move the item so we can have a pool and have a discussion on Monday that's not disjointed as relates to dealing with all these issues.
And for both of you, I'm hoping the discussion on both of these items is rather short, but we do have three public comment cards on item number one and five on item 38. So I'm going with the will of the body here.
Can we do the three?
Rock, paper, scissors? I think item 38.
In the spirit of cooperation, I will defer to Bernard Parks, item one.
And I'll return then.
Okay. Well, then we'll come to item number one and hear from Irene Kazmer, followed by Wayne Healy and Will Nieves. Is Ms. Kazmer here? If she's not here, Wayne Healy? And if Will Nieves will step forward as well?
Good morning. My name is Wayne Healy. I've been a muralist for 32 years in the city of L.A. and elsewhere. My company, East Lo Street Scapers, is currently working on a mural 17 by 80 feet. But I want to tell you about a mural called Goso de Vario in Ramona Gardens. That mural has been part of that community for 30 years. It's been reproduced in college textbooks. It's one of the many treasures of the city of Los Angeles in the mural collection. In its lifetime, mural, when it started, the city was indifferent to murals and today we are the mural capital of the world. We bring in tours. I have led tours of international cultural tourists that are, have heard from their country about the murals of Los Angeles. Murals, like everything else, need maintenance. And in 2002, the city picked Goso de Varios as well as 11 others for renovation. The mural was done professionally, restored, and looks like it could last another 30 years. The Getty Institute recently held a symposium on the importance of maintaining our contemporary murals. I understand that the Honorable Mayor Hahn's budget threatens to eliminate the mural restoration program of the Los Angeles Cultural Affairs Department. I submit that that would be sort of penny-wise and pound-foolish. These treasures are bringing people into the city of Los Angeles, not to mention giving pride to the residents of the neighborhoods which they reside. I guess I want to tell you that please do not vote out the monies for the mural restoration. And I'd like to leave these two newsletters from the Getty Conservancy to council members Reyes and Villarreal Gosa, where most of the old murals that we have done reside. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. The next speaker is Will Nieves. Mr. Nieves? Okay. I believe Mr. Nieves is not here. So we'll go back to Mr. Parks. Mr. Parks, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chair, I just ask that we move this item today and get ready for the budget deliberations for Monday starting 10 o'clock. And that, again, just a request that any items that individual council members may have, if you can get them to the CLA as early as possible this weekend, this evening, early Monday. And again, we're not encouraging more, but we think we've covered most of all the issues. But if there are some, that we get them there and so that they can begin to work on them. CLA is the only one that will be preparing those documents in our behalf. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Our next speaker is Mr. Cardenas, then to befall them, Ms. Brule, Ms. Hahn, Ms. Misakowski, no, just kidding, Mr. Parks, that's it. Okay. Please open the roll on the item. Okay, we'll just note it right now. Okay, we'll continue that until Monday. And for the members of the public who are watching, Monday will be when the full council will consider the 2004, 2005 budget. For those who are interested, that will be the day that those decisions most likely will be made. And we encourage members of the public who are interested to come here at 10 o'clock to council chambers and to join us for those very important discussions. Next item, please. We have item 38 before us.
And that was called special by Councilmember Hahn. It's a Hahn motion.
Okay. Ms. Hahn?
Mr. President, colleagues, I am asking us, as the second-largest city in the country, to have a voice on an issue which has really shocked not only our nation, but I think the entire world. And I'm asking us to pass a resolution today urging the President of the United States to have a complete investigation of any abuses, of torture, or any other incidents we've found of the Iraqi prisoners. But before I finish my comments, I think it would be appropriate to hear from members of the public. I know we have some very distinguished members of the religious community who'd like to speak out on this issue. And I would like for them to go first and then I will finish my comments.
There's no objection to that. We'll take public speaker cards first. Our first speaker is Samir Rabadi from Amnesty International, followed by Bishop John Bruno from the Episcopal Diocese.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me here. My name is Samir Rabadi. I am the membership program coordinator for the Western Region of Amnesty International, USA. Amnesty International has been fighting the crime that is torture for over 40 years. And in that time, we have developed an understanding and an expertise about the consequences of torture, about the consequences to the dignity of the victim and the torturer, and the consequences to the community in which it takes place. That we have discovered that it is an unacceptable practice and a practice that is outlawed by the community of nations through the Geneva Conventions and the Convention against Torture. Not only is torture unequivocally illegal under international law, but it is notoriously ineffective. A person being tortured will say anything, will do anything to stop the torture. Innocent people, and according to the Red Cross, the vast majority of the detainees at Abu Ghraib are innocent of participating in the insurgency. Innocent people will incriminate themselves and others to make the torture stop. As a part of my work for Amnesty International, I have met many torture survivors, and it's a testament to their strength of character and will and spirit that they have survived what they have undergone. I don't want this country to be responsible for that kind of psychological, physical, emotional, spiritual damage to those individuals, to the communities in which they live and reside. And finally, torture does not make us safer. We may think that we are getting information that will help save American lives, but all it will do is turn the communities against us. Torture is a practice not really designed for gathering information. As I said, it's unreliable. The people who most, who have the information our forces most want, are trained, are, they have practices to contain information. The people who are being tortured will not provide anything useful. And in the end, what it will do is it will betray the principles this country was founded upon, the dignity of each and every individual. We must do all that we can to defend those principles, and I urge you to vote in favor of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. Our next speaker is Bishop John Bruno.
With your permission, the Iman and the rabbi are going to join me. This is an issue of Abrahamic faiths. I want to apply the words of Isaiah about beating our swords into plowshares, especially the sword that beheaded Nicholas Berg in Iraq. It should be beaten into a plowshare and four pruning hooks to be made of the spears of ridicule with which Americans have shamefully taunted and abused Iraqi prisoners. Violence is ended only and ultimately when nonviolence becomes a reality in our lives. Whether on the world stage or in family relationships, a quiet answer still turns away the wrath as long as the community is willing to stand with us. These are the principles we are called to affirm as people of faith. In our baptismal covenant in the Christian faith, we're called to respect the dignity of every human being. Respecting that dignity, that human dignity is central to all three of our Abrahamic faiths and to all the world's great religions. This is why the humiliation and sexual degradation forced on Iraqi prisoners is so reprehensible. In the Hebrew and Christian tradition, as well as the Islamic tradition and scriptures, rape and other sexual forces on man or woman is an abhorrent and evil act, an evil way of creating domination and subjugation. The shame is only heightened in the Islamic tradition with the interpretation of the roles of men and women. We may at times feel powerless against atrocities and violence, but we are not. Indeed, we are called at all times to teach and to practice as peacemaking individuals and to form lives of young and old to be people who are guided constantly by a moral compass and the presence of the holy. If we allow our fear to take over and move to torture, we denigrate ourselves and our God. We must renew our commitment to teaching peace and to living it. This means creating cities, nations, in which citizens, leaders do not resort to evil or falsehood. It also means speaking the truth to leaders to prevent truths from being distorted for political purposes. Therefore, I ask people of faith and goodwill everywhere, and especially those in positions of public trust, like you, the members of the city council, to bring faith and reason to bear in the process of peacemaking and reconciliation, to resist partisan rhetoric, and to remember that violence is not a means or a recourse affirmed by Christianity or the other world religions. I also encourage everyone to pray for all military personnel and their families, for the innocents endangered in this mess and crossfire, and for peace to prevail as we reach out with hands of healing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Iman?
My name is Iman Ashraf Karim. I greet you with the Islamic greeting of Assalamu alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh, a peace and blessings of God be upon all of you. I wish to thank Councilwoman Janice Hahn for graciously inviting me to this momentous event today. I'm honored to be among you. God, Allah, the gracious, the merciful, has revealed in the Holy Quran, the sacred scripture of Muslims, the following verses. Oh, you who believe, stand out firmly for God as witness to fair dealing, and let not the hatred of others to you make you swerve to wrong and depart from justice. Be just, that is next to piety, and fear God, for Allah is well acquainted with what you do. God commands justice, the doing of good, and forbids all shameful deeds, injustice, and rebellion. He instructs you that you may receive admonition. This resolution proposed today in the spirit of justice and fair dealings commands every seeker of peace and harmony to support and promote it, because by not doing so, we consciously do an injustice to our own dignity. As upright, God-fearing citizens, our compassion and desire for justice compels us to seek the truth, to resolve the issues that incur discord and conflict, to restore dignity where it has been destroyed, to promote peace where peace has been disturbed, and to give hope when despair has overwhelmed. The Prophet, may peace be upon him, has said, "All creatures of God form the family of God, and he is the best love of God who loves best his creatures." In another saying, he said, "A community in the midst of which sins are committed and which would be but are not corrected by the community is most likely to be encompassed in its entirety by the punishment of God." I commend this resolution, support it, and pray in the spirit of justice that all in this room will become part of an event that can reclaim human dignity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Iman. We appreciate your words today. Rabbi Allen Freeling.
I stand before you not only as your Director of Human Relations Commission, but also as a spokesperson for the Jewish community. The three of us stand before you as voices of conscience, but the very fact that you bring this motion before you, Councilwoman, is an indication that you and your colleagues now have an opportunity to join us as voices of conscience at a time in which this community needs to channel all of its feelings, all of its emotions, away from anger, away from sadness, away from the possibility of lashing out, to be certain that we, all of us, are pursuers of justice and peace. No matter where we stand with reference to our involvement now in Iraq, where we do stand is an abhorrence at any time that there is an act of inhumanity. Our newspapers, our magazines, our television sets, our radios are filled with all of this information, probably too much, to remind us of how inhumane some people can be. We, the three of us, and you around this horse show, say to this community, say to this nation, say to this world of ours, that we do not, we do not move ourselves to the lowest denominator, but rather we are here to talk about that which heightens the human spirit. And in heightening the spirit, we call for justice and peace everywhere and at all times without interruption. Therefore, along with my colleagues, not only do we commend Councilwoman Hahn for bringing this motion forward, but we stand prepared to commend you as you unanimously adopt this resolution.
Thank you very much. Rabbi Freeling. Our last speaker is Miguel Angel Perez.
Again, I'd like to make some poignant comments on this issue. It's very close to my heart and very close to my family. We're talking not only injustices, shame of the U.S. military forces committing these crimes, but along together historically, well-documented facts that the U.S. government has trained other governments around the world how to torture and create inhumane acts against other peoples. One instance that I can speak on, that I feel that I'm pretty well-connected with my blood and my family, Tolteca, Olmeca, Azteca, Cherokee, the indigenous peoples of these lands, well-documented facts that the U.S. military forces did torture, murder, and create inhumane acts against the peoples here, one in fact during the Mexican-American War, the Irish that came across and came as part as the invading forces of this land. There was torture against them because they were Catholic by the Protestant officers. The military forces from the Irish joined the Mexican forces, and they fought against injustices and torture, murder, and shame. It is very important not just to talk of what's happening in Iraq or other countries, but there are well-documented facts that this has been going on for hundreds of years. So when we speak, and you all speak on the question of torture, inhumane acts, we're talking about something that you're looking at somebody as related to, have a family that has been tortured and has been murdered. And myself, as a young man walking the streets in Los Angeles by the LAPD, which is related as a military force, that I was treated as a young little boy at the age of eight with a gun in my mouth, just walking the streets, going to a store to buy ice cream. That's mental torturance, along together with all the young people that I grew up with and the people that are still in these streets. So when we talk, and you talk about the question of inhumane acts and the justice of torture, we have to include the fact of what's happening here in this city and what's happening on these lands. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That finishes our public speaker cards, and Ms. Hahn was our first speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Wasn't that a beautiful sight moments ago to see the rabbi, the bishop, and the iman standing together, united, in denouncing these horrible acts? And that's what I'm asking us to do today. Join with me and many others, no matter what our political persuasion, no matter what our ethnic background, no matter what our religious background, as we represent people of Los Angeles and denounce the terrible torture and mistreatment of Iraqi prisoners at the Abu Ghraib prison, as well as the mistreatment and torture of our own American citizens by the Iraqi nationals as we saw in Fallujah. We've all seen the photos, images of men in hoods, images of men being led on leashes, images of men and women being humiliated and abused. And as we've heard recently, these photos are supposed to be mild in comparison to those that will most likely be released in the coming days. These photos have set off an international furor, tarnishing our image around the world. And what we're saying today is Americans do not treat people this way. This is not the way we behave. And of course, one of the ironies of this abuse is that it took place in the very prison that was infamous for the torture and abuse unleashed by Saddam Hussein upon his own people for so many years. Torture and abuse that we promised to rescue the people of Iraq. And on December 14th last year, when Saddam Hussein was captured, our president promised the people of Iraq dignity for their grave... the people of Iraq dignity for their great culture and for every Iraqi citizen, the opportunity for a better life. Yet what these photos display is an outright negligence for any type of human dignity. We have let the people of Iraq down, we have let the people of our own country down, and we've let the people of the world down. I want to read an excerpt from a discussion on the floor of the U.S. Senate on Monday, which went a similar resolution to what we're doing today, was unanimously passed. Senator John McCain, a former victim of torture, a former POW, had this to say. "As Americans, we are defined not just by the way in which we deal with our friends, but by how we treat our enemies. I know that in many countries around the world, abuse of prisoners is commonplace, and brutal interrogation is the norm rather than the exception. But America, a nation that was founded on the idea of liberty and justice for all, must hold itself to a higher standard. We liberate, not torture. We free, not oppress. More than 50 years ago, our nation made a commitment to the Geneva Convention. In fact, our country was a leader to this accord, and the Geneva Convention clearly lays out provisions for the treatment of prisoners of war. And today, it is clear that it is disappointing that members of our military have violated these provisions. We have breached the sacred contract." Colleagues, I want to point out that this resolution I introduced one week ago also strongly condemns the terrible acts of violence against Americans by Iraqis. We have seen or heard of the horrible video of the murder of American Nick Berg, but I want to say today that what we're saying is violence and torture in all cases is wrong, heinous, and should be condemned. But again, as Senator McCain said, as Americans, we hold ourselves to higher standards. I urge your support of this resolution today. As the second biggest city in this country, I would argue that it is indeed our duty, on behalf of the people we represent, to send a message to the President of the United States, to let him know that the people of Los Angeles are appalled and disappointed. But more importantly, we must let him know what we expect, that we expect a full and expeditious investigation. We expect that all those responsible and all those that allowed this torture to take place or knew about it be appropriately punished. And most importantly, we need assurances that this will never happen again. Los Angeles is an international city. We represent constituents of every race, every religion, every creed, and this mistreatment and torture is a crime against every man, woman, and child that we represent. It is a crime against every one of us, and it's a crime against the basic right of human dignity. Dr. Martin Luther King said, "Our lives begin to end on the day we become silent about the things that matter." Let us not be silent today in Los Angeles about what matters. I urge you to pass unanimously this resolution, allowing the voice of Los Angeles to be loud and clear on this matter.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this item? If not, let's open the roll on that. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Hahn. And thank you to members of the religious community for being here today. Colleagues, as you heard, ten ayes means that there are only ten of us, so please, if everybody will sit tight as we go through the end of business. Next items.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay. Those items are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused Wednesday, May 19th, to arrive at 10:30 for city business that meets council policy.
Okay. He is excused.
Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused July 27th, 28th, and 30th, and August 20th for personal business. Those meet council policy.
Okay. Mr. Weiss is excused as well.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Wednesday, June 2nd, to leave at 11:45 for city business, and on Wednesday, June 16th, for personal business. Those meet council policy.
Okay. He's excused as well.
Councilmember Ziney requests to be excused Wednesday, May 26th, to arrive at 10:30 for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Ziney is excused.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Colleagues, that clears the desk. Any announcements? Announcements? If not, can I please ask everybody in chambers to rise for adjourning motions? Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise to adjourn in the memory of Eduardo Palomo. I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Eduardo because Eduardo was an actor in the film A Day Without a Mexican that we honor here today, and that was the last piece of work that he did as a world-renowned actor. Eduardo passed away at the age of 41 recently, and he is best known for his role as Juan del Diablo in the Mexican TV series Corazon Salvaje. Eduardo was an internationally renowned icon of film and television. As A Day Without a Mexican was Eduardo's last film, we hope it will be a testament to his legacy as a socially committed artist. And the irony, if you see the movie, he actually sings a song in the movie, and part of the words are saying goodbye or leaving without saying goodbye. He did pass away very suddenly, and it was a shock to the people who love him and who've come to know him, and I think it's appropriate that we adjourn in his memory. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I sat in to have us adjourn in memory of Gina Marie Fenton. She passed away on Sunday, May 9th, the victim of a car accident at Fenwick and Sunland Boulevard just off the 210. Gina was seven years old and in the third grade at Incarnation School in Glendale, where she loved to sing in the choir. She was riding in the family car on Saturday with her mother, father, and brother. After the accident, the family was rushed to the hospital where Gina was placed on life support. She passed unfortunately the next day, and her family members were hospitalized but have since been released. Gina will be greatly missed but will always be remembered in the hearts of her family, friends, and all of those who were privileged to see her beautiful smile. And I met with some children yesterday from Our Lady of Lords in my district, and many of them had been friends of Gina's. And this is an area in which we are trying desperately to get Caltrans to help us do some changes at that light because it has been, and Mr. Cardenas knows, it's been an area that we have had several accidents, and so our hearts go out to the family of Gina Marie Fenton.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Ms. Skoski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask the council to adjourn in the memory of a former highly respected city employee, a man named Tom Golden. Tom was the highly respected and retired chief zoning administrator for the city of L.A., and he passed away on May 5th. That's a position that many of us now who work in planning recognize that Bob Gianvito now holds, a very, very high level. It's really the second highest position in the city planning department. Tom was born on February 16th, 1921, in New York, from Irish parents who had immigrated to the United States. He entered Santa College in New York in 1940 and married his wife Corinne in 1943. He joined the Army and served in World War II with an armored infantry division that fought at Anzio, Italy, for a number of months. He was awarded a Bronze Star for his action in his service in Anzio and was sent home to recover. He returned to New York, earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in sociology, then attended New York State University Graduate School and took courses in public administration. He joined the city of Shenectady, New York, and rose to the position of Director of City Planning. In 1959, he and his family moved west to Los Angeles, and he began his career in 59 at the Department of City Planning as a city planning associate. He promoted to city planner and senior city planner. He headed a number of areas in the planning department, and in 1965 was designated the chief hearing examiner, through which position all zone changes, all conditional use applications, and every recommendation is made to the city planning commission, city planning committee, and city council. He's the man who embodies it. He was appointed as chief zoning administrator in 1976 and was therefore in charge of the office of zoning administration, all variances, dealt with very, very significant matters, including things like oil drilling in the city of Los Angeles and the like. He was awarded a career service award by the city in 1978. Mayor Tom Bradley personally presented the award to him and made actually the following remarks that I have, that's when Tom Bradley presented this to Tom Golden. "Let me just say, it is very important for those of us who must rely on the opinions of our staff, and that we have faith and confidence in the opinions and recommendations made by them. There is nobody whom I have known over the years that I have been associated within the city that has higher quality and integrity and on whose judgment I have been more able to rely more heavily than Tom Golden." He retired from the city in 1982, so he had a good number of years of retirement, but he continued to privately practice, and he actually, as a private consultant, drafted the original Porter Ranch Land Use Transportation Specific Plan, which was the first time we used a specific plan for a major project, and that was adopted by the city in 1990. Shortly thereafter, he and his wife Corinne moved to Lake Wildwood, a residential community with a private golf course. Everybody knew Tom, knew that he loved the golf course. He played golf daily and enjoyed the company of several other Los Angeles city retirees, including Roy and Joan Bundick, who were city planners, Don Howery, who was formerly jungle manager, the head of transportation, and Councilmember Joan Flores. Services were held two days ago in Grass Valley, but Tom is someone who is mightily respected, stood his ground, made recommendations on his own desk, professional judgment, and everyone in the realm of city planning, in the realm of the city councils who served with him and through whom he served, respect him. And I remember being at his retirement party. It was a very, very big and heartfelt, warm reception for all the good that he had done for city planning and city of Los Angeles for all those years.
Thank you, Ms. Skoski. Ms. Perry.
On behalf of Mr. Parks, this adjournment motion is in memory of Charles Gus Miggs, Sr., who was born in Talequa, Oklahoma, on October 19th, 1914. As a young man during the 1930s, he worked at a myriad of jobs in Los Angeles and later in San Diego. He began his career with the Los Angeles Unified School District as a custodian in 1939, and eventually rose to the ranks of maintenance supervision, retiring as an area maintenance supervisor in 1973 after 33 years of service. Mr. Miggs served his country in World War II at several Southern Army bases and in the South Pacific in New Guinea. He received an honorable discharge in 1945, having achieved the rank of Master Sergeant. Mr. Miggs maintained an active lifestyle before and after retirement and served in several community organizations in Los Angeles and later in Paris, California, where he moved in 1976. In the early 1970s, while still living in South Los Angeles, he received the honor of being selected Family of the Year by the Los Angeles Urban League. Mr. Miggs passed away on Sunday, May 9th, 2004, and he was 89 years old. Funeral services were held today at Moreno Valley United Methodist Church, and he will be interned at Riverside National Cemetery. He is survived by his wife of 61 years, Mignon Singleton Miggs, seven children and their spouses, 10 grandchildren and their spouses, five great-grandchildren, two brothers-in-law, and a host of nieces and nephews.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ask the council to adjourn in the name of Verlin Lamar Rogers, who passed away April 4th. Verlin Lamar Rogers passed away at the age of 61. He was a resident of Northridge for over 30 years. He was a fireman in the United States Air Force, and he survived by his wife Marjorie, four children, and seven grandchildren. May Verlin Lamar Rogers rest in peace.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, Mr. Vicarosa asks that we adjourn in memory today of Steve Edney of the United Industrial Workers Union. Steve spent his entire career fighting for workers in the union and labor movement, and he moved up the union ladder very quickly, becoming a steward early on, president of the Shop Stewards Council. And in 1965, Steve was elected president of the UIW. From 1981 until he retired in 2001, he served as the national director of the UIW and also held the post of vice president of the County Federation of Labor and chair of the Los Angeles Organizing Committee. He died on May 4th at the age of 84 and is survived by his wife Alberta and his two children.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Colleagues asked you to join me today in adjourning in memory of Vani Hilton Sweeney, who passed away on May 10th. Vani served as a public relations director for over 25 years for James Brown Entertainment, including being the current editor of his Truth magazine. She was a special person whose gift of bringing people together to celebrate talented people of color in the music industry under the umbrella of the pre-Grammy Party was legendary and particularly visionary when there was very little attention that was given to African-American artists from other mainstream organizations like the Grammys at the time, Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, and others. For more than 20 years, she provided the venue to recognize up-and-coming artists as well as to give a platform to those that were successful and established. She is survived by son Howard Sweeney and his wife Jennifer, granddaughter Jade, and step-grandson Justin McCarthy, brother Walter Thompson and his wife Jerry, sisters Rose Alma King, Barbara Brown and her husband John, and numerous nieces and nephews. May she rest in peace. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you, colleagues, and congratulations to Steve Edwards, our newest addition to the Walk of Fame. Have a great weekend.